Good evening and welcome to the Security Safety Transportation Subcommittee Meeting. Today's Tuesday, August 6th, 2024. We are at the George M. Rahm Little Theater at Brockton High School. The time is 5:30 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order and establish a quorum. Mr. Gomes?
Here.
Mr. Vega?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Yeah.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah.
And the mayor is also present.
Hello.
And Dr. Tahiliyani is here, our superintendent. So we do have a quorum. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. So this evening, I'd like to acknowledge Principal McCaskill. If he can just come up, we're going to discuss a few items as far as the yonder bags, student IDs, and a safety update later on with our school police. The first item is Item A, Yonder Bags. Principal McCaskill.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone is doing well. And I'm here, pretty much, we went through at the end of the year about we had received the bags and such, but I'm here for any particular questions that you may have. We do have just a couple of housekeeping things. We do have to mount the magnets, and we have the locations of all. It's just a matter of getting them up. And we have the secure spots for the magnets when we unscrew them within the main offices of each house. And we are in the process of working. We have a yonder meeting tomorrow to finalize some of the few details that we have with respect to process. Understand that the first two to three weeks will be problematic because this, we're talking about 3,800 students, pouches, and a new procedure going forward. And so we're hoping this is one thing we will share with the staff as well, that this will be growing pains for us. And we understand that. And I'm hoping that the school committee and our school community will bear with us and have some patience with us as we really fine tune this process, as students really adapt to the yonder bag. So without any further, I'd like to answer any questions that you folks may have.
Before I ask my questions, anyone from the committee have any questions? Mr. Gomes?
How are we doing?
All right. How are you doing, sir?
Good, good. A few questions. So one is, I know we have a lot of students here at Brockton High. How are we planning to start the process when they come back to school in terms of, you know, getting everybody in on time for class and getting everybody organized and things like that?
It'll be an abbreviated schedule, the first three days of school. And one of those processes, well, beginning with our freshman orientation, we'll be handing out bags and laptops to our freshmen the week of the 19th through the 22nd. So far, we have roughly about 200 freshmen coming in, but registration is still going on. So we're hoping that number definitely increases itself before the opening of school. We'll have a process in which all students will filter through either the gymnasium or the auditorium in the Fine Arts Building and have a process of picking up not only their laptops with their IDs, as well as their yonder patches, pouches. And we will be accounting for all those disbursements.
Just something that I was wondering, have we sent a notification to parents and students that to be aware that when they come in, this is going to take place?
That actually took place in May and June.
Okay.
And so we will give them an update as well, because you know, at some time with the summer, you've got to have a refresher. So that refresher will be going out, sir.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Vega?
Hello. Principal, can you walk us through a little bit of what the training has looked like for faculty and staff? Anything that's happened thus far, anything that you've got planned between now and the start of school?
Well, with the training of that, you know, obviously with our, and I know there's an announcement later on, that Mr. Jackson will be our new Director of Safety and Security. This is, it's just new for us. So we'll be looking at yonder. We get some more details with us. I think the biggest thing for us is really getting a sense of how this will change our entry into our four houses. We pretty much have it planned out for students that are late. It's relatively easy. One, there's only one entrance. That students can come in, and that process is relatively simple. But when we looking at getting students in for that 7:15 bell, that's where, again, the lines are going to be quite, quite long early on. But how do we fine tune that? And that's retraining our safety and security specialists, which are coming back onboard this year. Their roles and responsibilities are going to change. So that's why it's important, and it's paramount, that we really get to this as soon as we possibly can. Again, we just got notice that we can get them back onboard. I don't know how early we can get them back onboard, but I know everyone is scheduled back. And you obviously know, this is not a day's training. This is something that we have to do that's ongoing. So again, it's still very vague and very broad to be very candid and very transparent with folks, but it's something that we don't feel it's going to be a great proper problem in the fall as we return for school, because the only additional piece is the addition of the yonder bags.
Ms. Vega, and then Mr. Sullivan. I'm sorry.
You just gave me a new last name.
At least I didn't call you Ms. Rodriguez.
Good evening, Principal. Quick question regarding, we have the yonder bags for the cell phones. What are we going to do regarding headphones and earbuds?
Earbuds actually fit into the bags themselves. Obviously, if someone's coming in with some large headphones, again, I don't know what you're listening to unless you've got some other type of frequency that you're listening to. But those are things that which we can take, you know, first and foremost, first offense, ask the student to remove them and place them in the secure area, either their bookbag or just leave them with an administrator. And again, if there's some difficulty, we'll just follow code of conduct going forward.
Second question. Say if a student is hiding a cellphone and does not get a yonder bag, what is the first precaution? Like, you know, is it a write-up? What is it like exactly do we have to do to make sure that the students are following up their new policy and handing over their cellphone to put in the yonder bag?
Well, first offense, again, we're trying to teach adult behaviors and such. Put the phone away properly and such. If that's done, we have no problem. Second offense, administration obscure, we take the phone, and we hold it, and we make a phone call to the parent. And at the end of the day, that student can come and retrieve their phone, but until contact is made with that parent. Third offense, we confiscate the phone, parent must pick up the phone, and then we have a further conversation with the parent. Any subsequent offenses will result in disciplinary action.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, and then Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes, Mr. McCaskill. I went to the first yonder bag meeting for the parents. I'm not sure if it was in May or June.
Sure.
But there wasn't many people. It was a real small, limited crowd. I was just wondering, have you had other meetings besides that?
Well, we did, we did not have any follow-ups, but we did make school messenger going out in our four bases, in our four languages, prevalent languages of English, Portuguese, Cape Verdean, Cape Verdean, and Haitian Creole. And as to Mr. Gomes' question, again, a refresher will definitely be due for us, for all our parents. Obviously, we were planning on a date for our freshman parent, our new incoming freshman parent, that week of the 19th through the 22nd. But we will also look at that following week of the 26th, just to have, just to have a refresher, as well as the school messenger going out.
The second question is, the yonder bag suppliers, are they going to be there opening day?
Oh, we have them right now.
They're there now?
They're, they're in a secure location here at the school.
No, no, I meant the people to help.
Yeah, they matter, yeah, they, they'll be up, matter of fact, they will be on campus the first week of school. And I don't think they'll be there for all three days, but they will be the first day of school.
And they'll help out.
But we have a meeting with them. Again, they've met, I can't thank the yonder folks enough for their presence, you know, even, either via Zoom or by email. They have been readily available to us. And again, I can't thank them enough for all the things that they have been doing going forward with this process. They understand the magnitude of a school such as Brockton High School with its sheer size, but with their experience with larger schools, not too many, but rather larger schools, not as, like 3,000 students, they've been through this process. And so their, their guidance has been tremendous.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you. I was at the presentation. Do we have, is it possible, I'm not sure if it's done because I haven't checked, possible to have like a PowerPoint or a small skip, you know, video where we could actually put it on our website and our social media, explaining the yonder program as we did a couple of months ago with the presentation to the parents? So that, you know, I don't know if we can email them, you know, obviously, we have emails so these parents can, those that didn't get the opportunity to make it here, to learn about the program. Is there, is there a way possible? I mean, you know, we have three weeks left, but, you know, to put something together, like this is the program, this is what's the expectation, and moving forward with this program?
Absolutely. The program that we put on that you were present at, I think getting that on, because it's a nice video, really informative short video from yonder, obviously, we have to get permission from them to put that on. I'm sure that they will okay it because, again, it's promoting their product. But that should not be a problem. Getting that right on the website, not only on the website, but also getting that out in a school messenger blast.
And the, the other is, are we rolling this out just on the first day of school? Are we doing this with the freshman orientation, making sure they get the yonder bags prior to coming to school? So it kind of?
Both, both.
Both, doing it both?
Both, yes, sir.
Okay. And the, the other piece is, I know myself and Mr. Sullivan were there, is that, you know, it's not just a gray bag that these students actually have the ability to go and design their own yonder pouches as well. So, and I know I, you know, myself and a few members of this district that actually, you know, had, you know, we were in Springfield before we presented this to the, to the school committee. And it, it's going to be tough in the beginning.
Absolutely.
But it, it's a great program, and we're going to see the results of it academically.
Yeah, I definitely think, but again, it's just that those growing pains. And then that's going to be, it's going to be some give and take. It's going to be a lot with these students. Do I foresee that being something that we can't overcome? Not at all. I think it's going to be a process that they all adapt to. And even with some of our parents may have some difficulty with it as well. I hope that they utilize their rights to come in and talk to, talk to the administrative team so we can share what our feelings are and the process of why, and the rationale of why we are doing this. And it's not in any way, shape, or form to penalize anyone. We want to create a cellphone-free environment. It is not a punitive issue. It is something to really get our focus back on the business of education.
I know Mrs. Azak will love this question, but do you have any assemblies scheduled for the students, you know, basically to let them know what the expectations are? You know, freshman assembly, junior assembly, just let them know, like, this is what we expect of you. This is the policy. Do we have any of that scheduled as of now?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, first aid, we will meet, personally meet with each and every grade level the first day. But those, the meetings that you also, we also had these conversations with our students, you know, with our current sophomores, juniors, and seniors. Obviously, the freshmen will get it twice at the orientation, as well as the first day of school. But we really want to really enforce to them that this is not something that we're doing to you. This is something that we're doing to support and assist you and really having a successful time here at Brockton High School. Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Principal.
Good evening.
Just a couple of questions. It's good to hear the yonder folks have been really, you know, collaborating with you.
Absolutely.
Guess my question is, are the bags under warranty if we have any defects or any of them break?
Defects, yes. If they're vandalized, they'll have to, there's going to be a cost to the student families for that.
Okay. And then, did we buy any extras if we get new students into the district, into the high school?
Yes, with an asterisk, because depending on how many students we get during the course of the year.
Yes.
I mean, we did receive 4,000 bags. I think our enrollment right now, the last time I checked, was close to 3,700.
Yep.
So that's 300 additional. So if there's something, if, you know, I think just definitely communication, if we start to see that our supplies are running low and that we don't catch anybody off guard, you know, saying that we need X number of bags, I think we'll be all.
Thank you. I mean, I agree with you. It's going to be some growing pains, but it's going to be well worth it. It really will be. So thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Sullivan, then Ms. Oliver?
Yeah, I just have one follow-up question.
Sure.
Do you have a plan in place right now with, I'm not sure if it's going to be the police or the security people, how it's going to work the first day? Is somebody going to be passing out the bags?
Oh, yeah, we have a process. I think we have, to Mr. Gomes' point, we have a process of opening day activities, and that's part of the activities. Our processes going forward for the opening day of school.
I always just wanted, because, just take, for example, it's raining out like it did last year, when the kids were trying to get into the metal detectors, and there's a line up the Belmont Street.
Mm-hmm.
That can't happen again. But as the buses come in, is somebody going to be directing them on what to do and where to go?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I mean, I'm, now, there will be lines. I'm positive that they won't be out to Belmont Street. If they are, you know, that means we're not moving kids through enough. But again, with the yonder, with that process, the first day, they don't have, they'll just be coming in. It's usually that second day of school when the process actually starts. I think that will be the litmus test of the success of our process.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Ms. Oliver, then Ms. Sullivan.
Just to piggyback from Mayor's question, what is the price for damage from parents and students? So everybody's aware, so parents aware, so they can talk to the, you know, the kids to make sure they're not damaging, you know, school property, because there is going to be a fee to them.
Yeah, I believe the, at our policy meeting, I think it was $30 per bag.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Principal McCaskill. I was just going to let all the members be aware, because Anna knows about this Claudio Jorge, because we're on a security specialist contract, but the security specialists are going to be helping with that?
Yes, indeed.
I don't know if it was mentioned. They're going to be helping with the yonder bags.
Absolutely. Part of it, absolutely.
Yep. That's going to be part of the, and to update the interim superintendent, too. But we talked about that in the contract negotiations, that the security specialists were going to be helping with the distribution of the yonder bags, that locking and unlocking of them. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually have a couple of questions. So just to recap, how many of the unlocking mechanisms do we have?
We have 16 wall mounts. And I believe, and I can get a quick count, and please don't hold me to it.
Just estimate.
Yeah, about 12 handhelds.
And that's going to be enough to?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I mean, one, we do not want too many.
Okay.
Because, simple fact, all we have to do is lose one, and we're going to have a problem.
Okay.
So I think where they'll be located within each house, as well as having availability in each of the main offices in the, in each house, as well as the main office here at the school, will suffice.
Okay, so they're going to be in the main offices. The students can just, okay.
For example, if I may, if I may, if I give you an example, a student who has to leave school for an early dismissal, let's say at 11:30, well, there will be no wall mounts, but yet they will have to report. So at that time, they will report to their house office, in which that phone can be released, and they would just simply remove their phone and take their, make sure they have their pouch with them upon leaving, and just exit the building.
Okay. It's going to be one of those, they have their IDs, they're going to have to have the yonder pouch with them. Teaching them responsibility to have that. And the other thing is, is Mr. Rodriguez had mentioned, I just think there's so much of the unknown, where a lot of people asking questions, and that's why we thought it'd be a good idea to have this meeting tonight.
Sure.
Just to answer, at least get some of the parents
Absolutely.
to be able to watch this, get some answers to their questions.
Absolutely.
And so if we're all set with this part, we can move on to item number B is student ID. And I was thinking, while they get their ID, maybe they can get a little tutorial on the yonder bag to prep them for the first day of school. So if I just, if you can just touch base on the student ID. So how are we, how are we doing this? Because a lot of the IDs are outdated. Are we doing this by house? Are we doing it by week, per house?
Yeah, we're going to, yeah, the freshmen, obviously, during that week, the ones that show up will get new IDs. And that, that is a huge issue here at Brockton High School. When you look at some of our seniors, they're still wearing their sixth grade pictures on their IDs, and they, they've definitely changed. And so we're going to have a few open afternoons, a timeframe for a week, primarily that week of the 26th prior to school opening. And we'll try to, I think we have a couple of inducements to get folks here, but that will be an ongoing, that was something that is going to be ongoing, because we will not catch all 3,700, 3,800. But during the course of the year, our goal is to have every single student done by the close of December of this year. That's the goal.
That, that's plenty of time, I think.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
That's excellent, because we do need to update the IDs. Definitely update them. And then, I know I had spoken, any members have any questions on the IDs? Mr. Sullivan? And then Mr. Rodriguez?
They were, the bus company has got some kind of computer on the bus that they can swipe the ID. Is that going to be in effect as well?
I'm not really sure. I'd have to get further clarification from Transportation.
It's in there. We already went through that with Dr. Cox.
I'm, yeah, I'm, again, coming in January. That was something that I was not aware of. So that's something that I would have to be schooled upon as well.
Just, a lot of money was spent on that
Sure.
by the taxpayers of Brockton, and it hasn't been used since it's been put in. It's been almost two years now.
Well, seeing, seeing that I got here January 2nd, I, I think we, that's something that, you know, I'll definitely have to take a look at. But thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez, did you have something? Oh, I apologize. So, back to the student IDs. I know I mentioned this previously. So if a student's suspended, and they're not supposed to be on campus, I had mentioned, have them turn their IDs into the main office, and then that way they can't get back into the building. And then when they do come back from suspension or, or whatever, they have to check in at the main office, and they're escorted to their building to get their ID. That stops students from scanning and coming back in when they're suspended. There's got to be a way we can shut those IDs off. And that's another safety.
Sure. I would even, instead of that, because now we're talking transiency, them going back and forth. If we can, with our ID, IT department, just shut their ID down. So then it just doesn't register. If they try to attempt to get into the building, nothing registers. They're flagged.
And they'd have to check in to get it?
Well, then, once you hear that flag go through and it doesn't hit, now you have an administrator there who can take care of that situation.
Okay. We definitely have to, I know you just came in in January, and there was, you jumped in feet first, and we appreciate it. But that was one of my biggest concerns, is making sure that IDs are turned off and they don't have access to come back in, because they're, they're suspended for a reason.
Absolutely.
So if there's no other, oh, Mr. Rodriguez?
How much information do we have on a student's ID besides, you know, the graduation day and?
On their ID, it's just their, their student ID number, name, or probably you can shoot up with their date of birth and such, and current grade level, and house. Yeah, I, I would really have to check with IT to see what else is on there. But it, it's not, for example, like a social security card where it gives all that type of information. It shouldn't be. But I definitely should do some research, you know, quickly, over the next day or two, just to find out exactly what is on that.
Yeah. I'm looking at, you know, a student ID you're identifying, if there's like an emergency, instead of jumping on that computer, trying to pull it, that you have a parent's information or a phone number, that it's real quick to identify certain things, or their eye color, their height, their weight, I mean?
Yeah, I, I don't, again, not being an expert.
IDs are easy.
Well, not being an expert on that, but again, I know we have to deal with the rules of FERPA, which are very important on certain things. But I know if we have a student and they're scanning, once we have this, just their name and their ID number, and we, if we should have to contact a parent, there's a laptop available. And infinite campus is great, and popping up, normally do not have any difficulties unless it crashes. I mean, we can get all that information in a matter of a minute or less.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do any other members have any other questions? Okay, so Principal McCaskill, we appreciate your time. We are looking forward to this upcoming school year starting, starting new.
Absolutely.
Change, change is good. It's going to be, I'm sure there's going to be a little bit of chaos. It usually is the first couple of weeks, but we get through it every year. So, but thank you so much. And I probably will attend the freshman orientation just to get a feel for it and see what's going on.
All are welcome. All are welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. So that concludes our, our part with Principal McCaskill. And then I'd like to invite Lieutenant Benaka to come down with the safety update. And then we also have Mr. Jackson here for the safety update with the lieutenant.
Greetings, Superintendent Tahiliyani, also Mayor Sullivan, Vice Chair Rodriguez, and school committee members and the audience. So in terms of public safety, and if anyone doesn't know me, I'm Lieutenant Paul Benaka, the liaison to the school police. So in terms of public safety, last week, we had the Brockton Carnival, the charity carnival that Vice Chair Rodriguez had assisted in setting up. And that was a successful event. Everything went smooth. We had the, the event manned properly, and there didn't seem to be any issues with traffic, parking. The building was secure, the parking lot was secure. And I believe there was an issue that had happened in Weymouth, but I think the presence of the school police officers, thanks to the overtime and the coverage that was authorized by Superintendent Tahiliyani, there were no issues. So Friday, we had the, there was the free backpack giveaway that school committee member Azak had, had run, and that also went off without a hitch. And I, there was some minor traffic issues, but we redistributed personnel at various areas throughout, by the entrance, and also a little further away on West Street, and changed the, the order of vehicles going through to, to double lanes. And that alleviated any, any traffic issues. We did not receive any complaints from the police department that come in from the public, and that's really a key to how well that the, the event was run. And school committee member Azak, that was, obviously, was run very well. So in terms of public safety, there were no issues with that. For other things, two weeks ago, we had a training on juvenile laws and diversion with the juvenile probation office. All of the school police officers had gone through that. So it's nice to have a little bit of a refresher course. As everyone knows, the Starbucks has opened across the street, that 683 Belmont Street. So I met with management at that location. And in the past, we've had some issues with some of the local businesses, the ones that were across or near the high school. And they're going to take some measures, close between the hours of 1:00 and 3:00 when the kids get out. Just because when kids congregate, the one, the areas that are closest to the high school, it seems to be more of a concentrated area of, of those that congregate. So they're going to close between 1:00 and 3:00 right now. And we'll see, we'll see what happens with that. But the drive-throughs will be open. Also, we had a, we had an incident, and I know that I, I had given an email to Superintendent Tahiliyani, as well as Vice Chair Rodriguez. It was a South Junior High. We had a suspicious individual, apparently was carrying an edged weapon and a backpack. A city employee, he was concerned about it. There was no incident, but he called the Brockton Police, and there was a search done, and there was nobody located. But I had one of our officers, Officer Texara, who's actually in the back there. He was conducting the investigation, retrieved some video. And subsequent to that, we identified the individual. There's no incident. There's no, the, the person's not wanted. But we've, we've distributed that information to the communications director and also the superintendent. And the Brockton Police and also our school police officers will take an extra eye over at South Junior High. But it appears that there's no connection between the suspicious individual and the school. It just happens to be a proximity issue. Sometimes people do walk in the areas, and of course, there's, it could be a school that's nearby. And, but you can never be too safe. And of course, the, the general rule is to always be aware of your, of your location and be very vigilant as to your surroundings. And that certainly continues here. Also, they are, they're going to be background checks for four new school police officers. They're being conducted right now. And the academy date is, will be set for January. So providing that the, that everything goes well with the background checks, you're going to have four cadets, and that academy is 20 weeks. So should they, should they pass the background checks, that's what we're looking at, is four new officers. And then lastly, I believe I mentioned it in the last meeting, is that I've been tasked with conducting a safety assessment of the Brockton Schools. And as I said prior, I'm waiting to see about the assessment from the, the Davis Group, and they were contracted by DESI to come up with their assessment. And I don't want to contradict their assessment. So once the superintendent gets the DESI assessment, then I'd like to be able to compare mine with DESI's, and then come up with one for the school committee. And I think that concludes my presentation, if there are any questions.
Any of the members have any questions or comments? Mayor, and then Ms. Oliver?
Lieutenant, I want to thank you for the update. I also, we haven't seen you, Paul. On behalf of the entire city and the school committee, we're sorry about the loss of your mom.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Oliver?
Just a quick question. If you're going to be heading with the new director's safety, hiring all the, what is it called, safety specialist coming up, are you going to be involved in that?
We certainly will be available. I'll be available if there's any, if there's any inquiries. any inquiries as to my expertise, if they would like that. I certainly would be available to be, and be at the disposal of the director if he chooses.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other com, Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you for, your presentation was great. I just have one question. Do the school police now patrol our schools, the schools that are open and the schools that are closed?
Yeah, they continue to patrol schools. So just because, you know, that you don't, we don't have the, the students that are here participating with, I mean, there's still activities that, that go on at the schools.
Right.
But there's no, there's no difference in terms of the commitment that the school police have. So in other words, closed schools, et cetera, and also, you know, we, we do have personnel that are in many of the schools, they're still patrolling. So they're not off in the summer, I mean, they're not off in the summertime, meaning as in, they're still working their, their hours, they work their shifts.
The reason I ask, the Shaw School on Quincy Street, it's been closed for years. And I went by it, and I could've swore I was here, somebody's sleeping on the stairs. And to be honest, I was in a rush to go someplace. And I went back, that person was gone. And I was wondering if somebody is really checking those buildings to make sure homeless people aren't breaking in.
Well, just point of information, the Shaw School, on Manham Street, the Whitman School, and the Howard School were conveyed back to the city. So they're no longer deemed schools or school assets, are under the care and custody of schools, they're under the care and custody of the city. So I know the chief has directed patrols on those three properties.
Okay.
Thank you. I think they only, like, like the mayor said, I think they only monitor our current active schools in our buildings. Anything else, Mr. Sullivan?
No, I'll say.
Okay. Any other members with any comments or questions? Okay. So Lieutenant Benaka, so I take it you'll be working closely with Principal McCaskill, getting ready for the first day of school, and then our other schools, especially with traffic. I know some of our officers oversee the traffic in the morning, usually the first couple of weeks of school. There's a little bit of chaos while everyone's getting used to new schools, things like that. So we'll probably get an update once school starts. We always have an update after the first day of school. So we'll look forward to hearing all the, all the fun stuff that's happening. But thank you. If no one else has any questions, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, everyone.
Do we have anything under other business? Superintendent Tehiliani?
If possible, I did want to introduce our new security director, who's here with us this evening, and welcome him to say a few words. I am pleased to be able to introduce Mr. Robert Jackson, who is joining us as our inaugural security director. He joins us, having most recently worked at the Boston Public Schools Emergency Management Operation. And he also has extensive experience as a special police officer, including serving as a sergeant overseeing safety and security at the State's Department of Mental Health here in Brockton. This hire came about after a very extensive search process and an interview process. And I want to thank Dr. Cobb's, Chief Perez, and even some of our school's committee members for supporting this process. Today is a key milestone in our efforts to ensure that all of our schools are remaining safe and nurturing places for our students. And I look forward to having Mr. Jackson join us officially on August nineteenth. But we did want to be able to introduce him here to you tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent. Welcome, Mr. Jackson. It's a pleasure to have you here. If you'd like to just, if you'd like to give us a few words, and then I'll see if any of our members have any questions or comments.
Okay, that sounds good. My name is Rob Jackson. Like, thank you, Superintendent. I was a police officer for eleven years. The last four were at the DMH in Brockton. I started my career in Boston, back in 2012. I was also a firefighter for eight years. And most recently, I just resigned from BPS, the other BPS, Boston Public Schools, with a hundred and twenty-four schools, as an assistant director to emergency management. There was a whole team of us, so we did a lot of great work there. And part of my certification is, you know, obviously, I went to the academy, all types of trainings, some FEMA training, first aid certified. And then, so again, my idea of trying to help out Brockton Public Schools is to try to look at it from a different standpoint, considering the mitigation, preparedness, recovery, and response, okay? And part of, kind of like the same, similar to a mission statement in Boston, the idea is to look at the actions, decisions, and policies of BPS, and try to focus on the safety of the students and staff. I hope with the expertise of myself and the staff and the lieutenant, absolutely, you can, I'll definitely want you to sit in on interviews. I believe we can accomplish these goals. So again, by committing to the safety and security, by putting our kids in a safe environment for them, for everyone, again, I would hope to be proactive in the duties of patrolling and maintaining a safe environment for all the students, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. We had, we've met before, and we had a few moments to chat earlier. And I'm looking forward to working with you. Welcome aboard. We definitely need a director to help us as far as overseeing the safety. And I know the main focus right now is the high school, but it's gonna be all the schools eventually. So this is, this is a position that we've, we've needed for a while. And I believe this is, this is gonna be great, because you'll be working directly with Principal McCaskill. So any of the members have any questions or comments? The mayor?
So Jackson, I just want to welcome you. Really, someone with that experience is much needed here at Brockton Public Schools, specifically here at Brockton High, which is really a small city upon itself, right? But at the end of the day, you know, you're charged to make sure that it's a safe environment for students and staff. And, you know, as a parent, when we send us kids to school, we want to make sure that they're safe in the building and come home to us every night. So again, I applaud you for, for taking on this job. And anything we can do, anything I can do as mayor or chair, you, you have a collaboration in me. So thank you.
You're welcome. And I'll say, I was a resident of Brockton for twenty years.
You can move back. We, we would love you back.
Was. Anyways, so, you know, I came out of Dorchester, you know, went to school there, finished high school there, then I moved to Brockton. I did have a cousin here, an uncle the same age, don't ask, and a brother that did go through the Brockton school system. So, and I, again, I lived here for twenty years. I'm very familiar with the town. So I look forward, again, to working with everybody, hopefully bringing not just my expertise, the principals, the mayors, people from the school committee. It's not just me, definitely the lieutenant, and all the safety officers that will, that are currently on, and the ones that will be hired. So I look forward to, like, being with everybody. And congratulations to the superintendent on your new position as well, so.
Thank you. Like I said, welcome aboard. It's a team effort. I know I'm always accessible. Oh, Mr. Rodriguez, did you have a question?
I'm just gonna make a statement. You can go. I'll go after you.
Oh, I was just gonna say, it's a team effort. You can always reach out to myself and other committee members. We're all here. Students are our number one, and safety is number one. So you can always reach out to us. I know it's a new position, but like I said, we're all working together to better, better our schools for our students. Did you?
Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Just like to welcome you again. As a lot of the members here stated, it's a team effort, making sure that our schools are as safe as possible for our students and our staff, and the collaboration through our school administrators, principals, superintendent, school committee, our police force, the lieutenant, and making sure that we hire the right people. And, and looking at, you know, we have some audits that's coming from Davis, and what the lieutenant's assessment is, and putting that all together to make sure that, and I don't want to say jokingly that we're not making another request for the National Guard, but I can't say you have big shoes to fill, because you're the first one in this position. So it's a milestone that, that you're the first individual to fill this role. So congratulations.
Thank you. And when the lieutenant brought up actually safety assessments, we have been doing those in, at BPS. We did about seventy of them. I've actually led that whole department on safety assessments, and then another one of my team members did what we called a risk assessment, in collaboration with DESI, actually. So I've created a lot of stuff. Of course, I didn't take anything with me, but it's all, it's all a pair supposedly, right? So I look forward to, if you have any questions on how, how you're gonna do your safety assessments, or wanting any input, Lieutenant, I most absolutely could, you know, try to help. And I do plan on, at some point, doing my own safety assessment. But first, I gotta start. So again, tonight was just to come in and try to say hi, introduce myself a little bit. And we got, again, we have a lot of work ahead of us. So, and no, we don't need any National Guards to come in here, the kids.
Any other que, oh, Mr. Sullivan?
I just wanted to say, welcome aboard. And whatever you do, don't panic the first week. It's, it can get kinda wild here.
Well, since we're all adults in here, my first two days in Boston, we got two Glock Nineties fully loaded. Those are weapons handguns, so.
It's not that bad.
Yeah, so, you know, it was like, they're like, you staying? Are you coming back tomorrow? I was like, you know, I did, so.
Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you.
Same here. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. All right. Oh, Mrs., Ms. Oliver, did you have a question?
I needed to just ask a question.
Oh, I apologize.
Not for you, sorry. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Ms. Oliver.
I'm gonna put somebody else on the hotspot. Principal, I have a question for you, real quick. I know we, it's not part of the topic, but I want to know the dress code. How are we going to start enforcing that the first day of school?
Something what we tried to do, you know, in, in April, and that's when the issue started. We did have something that went out, where we had a couple of assemblies on it, and worked well into mid-May, and then we dropped the ball. We dropped the ball. And that's something that we have to be much more consistent. We proved that it could work, and I think when we started looking at all the things that were coming about with MCAS and graduation, we took our eye off that ball. And so something starting from day one, obviously starting in September, makes a big difference in April, May, and June. So now having that opportunity to start once again, the opening day of school, identifying what the code is, one, it is written, it is a policy of the Brockton Public Schools, the real BPS. And I'll just put that out there.
There you go.
Put that out there. Yeah, Mr. Jackson, I, I like stuff like that. But that's something that we just have to be very consistent about. And again, I'll hold myself accountable if that does not happen.
Thank you.
I appreciate that, because I know we had a lot of issues trying to roll it out, you know, when it first, when everybody signed, you know, the policy and everything else. But I think this year, we definitely gotta start it first day.
Absolutely.
And make everybody accountable. Educators, the leaders, and also parents at home.
Absolutely.
You gotta watch what your kids are wearing, and it's not a club, it's a school. Think about how you're gonna be dressed going to professional world, and you need to start dressing in that way.
And that's, and that's all of us, you know. It's something that can, can we say it's the school, it's from administration, administration to our school staff, to our parents. But I think it's our entire school community that has to really buy into this. And it sounds something that's so ominous, that we can't, yes, it can happen. Yes, it can, if, again, we are just staying consistent to what we really believe in.
Thank you. Mr. Vega?
I, I just want to point out something. We had a principal of our largest school in the city take accountability. And I just want to applaud you, Principal McCaskill, when you say things like, we dropped the ball, and, and then have a plan behind that for how you want to address it going forward. I think that's something that Brockton is sorely lacking. I think some of the challenges that we run into are challenges where no one is willing to take accountability, own the situation, and put forward a plan to rectify whatever the problem was. So I applaud Principal McCaskill, and I'm sure a full year of McCaskill would be better than a half year. Half year was pretty good, though.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Actually, Principal McCaskill, just to piggyback off of Ms. Oliver, we have a policy. It's there for a reason.
Absolutely.
They gotta follow the policy, and they haven't for years. So September's gonna be an eye-opener. But by following our policy on dress code, working with the yonder bags, like Ms. Oliver said, we are preparing them for the real world.
Absolutely.
You know, this is how you need to dress. This is, you can't be on your phone all day long at work. And I think this will help them as well. You know, I've talked to others that, that have gone through similar things like the yonder bag, and they're saying, you know, the, the students are excelling, because they're not on their phones, they're excelling. And same with just, and back to the dress code. We, I, we, I know everyone wants to look cute, but a dress code's a dress code, and, and we have to follow it.
Absolutely.
So, and it's there for a reason. So I'm sure, usually, a few of us stop in the first week of school, so I'm sure we'll be seeing the other first, first week of school.
You know, our doors are always open.
Absolutely. We do appreciate that. We appreciate that you're always accessible. So thank you, Principal. All right. That, I believe, concludes. Is there anything under other business? Okay, we have nothing under other business. If we can get a motion to adjourn. But before we motion to adjourn, we will be, we're a little ahead of schedule. We have our facilities usage meeting next at six-thirty. So a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, motions being made by Mr. Goome, seconded by Ms. Oliver. A show of hands? Unanimous. Uh, thank you. Meeting adjourned.